All right.
I declare the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. This is our June 7 regular meeting of Board of Supervisors. Before this meeting, we had an executive session to discuss matters of litigation. And next on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. Ashby Saunders.
Unfortunately, Mr. Saunders wasn't able to be here today with us, but as you can see over on the corner of Dick's desk is a sculpture, a small statue. It's also in the board's packet. Mr. Saunders attended the Park and Recreation Board in March. He's referring to this sculpture as Jazz Dancers and was thinking that a nice location might be near the new Covenant Bank Ban Shao. The board will recall that Mr. Saunders through a benefactor donated the SAC race that is located in the Township Central Park to the township. All our staff did was prep the site. The park board was very adamant that we don't have the capacity at this point to do any further fundraising for it, but that if he did find a benefactor, that they would certainly recommend to the board that entertainment be given to having the sculpture placed there should a benefactor be found on their park. And so the park board is, and I don't necessarily know that you need to decide this right this minute, but if interested and if a donor was to come along and be a benefactor for the sculpture, the consideration might be given at that time for the sculpture to be placed there. So.
Sounds good to me.
See if they find a benefactor and then come back to us. That'd be acceptable.
Everybody happy?
Yep.
Next visitor, public comment that's not on the agenda today. Anyone? Come up, please, or that mic right there is probably hot. Just give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Lanny Morganisi from 58 Radcliffe Drive in Doylestown Township. And I really apologize for coming to take up your time. I know you have many important things. This is sort of a personal thing that doesn't involve too many people except myself and my family, but I talked to Barbara about it and she said, "Come to the meeting." So I'm coming. Again, it doesn't affect a lot of people, but I'm coming about the 90 trees and bushes were planted directly behind my house on wetlands owned by the township, open space. Here's some pictures if I could just. And I would just like to make about four points and then I'll let you go on with your business. So this was a tree planting project, about 90 trees and bushes planted directly behind my house clustered on the border between my property and the open space. And the first point I'd like to make is I thought it was a bad choice for this particular project for a number of reasons. First is that the open space is a beautiful open pasture. It's a beautiful vista. It reminds me of the Serengeti Plain in Africa. And now there are going to be trees there, sort of another forest. We have lots of forests, but this open vista was just so beautiful and so unique, I thought it was the wrong place to put trees. But even more so, it's not mowed. So the bushes will be covered with grass that is not mowed, so that seemed to be impractical. And finally, it's a big space, many acres, but they're all clustered right behind my house. So I thought it was a bad spot for this particular project and I would prefer, and I think most people would, the beauty of that open pastoral vista. Now there'll be a forest there. The second point I'd like to make is that I was really surprised when it happened. You know, I thought that the township sort of notifies you when something's going to happen adjacent to your property. I received no notice. I wasn't given any information. I wasn't asked for my input. People just came out on Arbor Day and started planting these 90 trees. So number three, the third point that I'd like to make is these trees and bushes were protected with these white plastic tubes. There's 90 of them. They're right behind my house. The neighbors to either side really can't see them with a clear view, but they're just everything I see when I look out my back window. So there's these 90, I don't know, six or seven foot white plastic tubes that are jumping up out of the ground. And I don't think that, I don't think that sort of goes with the residential character of the neighborhood. It looks like a commercial nursery or it looks like some very weird vandalism of some sort. I just thought it was, it was, it was out of character and it certainly, I think, detracts from my property values. And the tubes will be there for two years. And that's a long time to look at those ugly tubes, 90 of them. The fourth point I want to make is that I did talk about this to some people at the township and some folks came out, which was very nice and they were very accommodating. There was one fellow who was getting ready to paint them, paint them green, which I think would be a whole lot better than the white. You wouldn't see them so much, they blend in. And we had said we were going to talk to Barbara and he said, "Okay, well, I'll come back later." So there was this offer to paint them. And then a couple of other representatives came out and were very sympathetic. They looked at them and they understood exactly how we felt because they looked so strange and odd and distracting. And there was sort of an agreement or a promise to move some of the, some of the plants and bushes off our property line, sort of away a little bit, but also to remove the tubes, which I think are the main distraction. It's just odd that everything is just clustered right. It's a huge property and it's just clustered right on our border. So we sort of got a promise and we were very happy that there was going to be an accommodation made. And then I was told that it could not be made. The accommodation could not be made, the plants, the tubes needed to be there. The tubes are there to protect the plants and the trees from deer and insects. I understand that, but it just looks so out of place. So that's sort of my story. And I guess I'm just asking as a remedy, if what was told, what was promised at first can't completely be done, maybe it can be reconsidered. Maybe the whole project can be moved to a better spot or spread out some instead of clustered. But in the absence of all that, I think a fair remedy would be to put in green tubes rather than the very obtrusive white tubes. If you go by Bridgepoint Park where some trees were planted, green tubes were used. They weren't painted. They're, the plastic was green and it blends in a whole lot better. And I would ask, so I'm asking number one, gee, could you relocate this project? Or number two, take the tubes off? Or number three, could you put the green tubes in that fit in with the natural beauty and sort of blend in with the grass? Thank you.
But hold on, Mr. Morganisi. Maybe we can get an update on how it happened, why it happened and what options we have.
Actually, I'm sorry, Steph. Can I just jump in one thing? Just that I'm not familiar, I can't speak to the promises or any meetings you had with any representatives from the township or anything like that, but just for the board's identification, this was part of the 2016 Arbor Day planning with the EAC and part of the Tree Vitalized Grant. And so that was part of the program. They're all native plants and shrubs, as you talked about, that were identified. I can't speak to why it was chosen at that exact spot besides it being identified as a naturally or native sensitive area. And regarding the, I can't give you a lot of answers, but except for what I know. And regarding the tubes, you're right, they're deer protection from the deer. And I know they need to be, this much, they need to be translucent so that the sunlight can still get to them so that they can continue to grow while protecting it for deer protection. So not sure if Steph, whether painting would be the solution because then it would not be translucent, whether there's other green ones, like you said, you saw at another site.
Bridgepoint Park, they're much different.
EAC might be, or Steph.
Yeah, we received, as Mr. Toohill indicated, the Environmental Advisory Council did receive a tree vitalized project. That site was selected with the Bucks County Conservation District Department with us. The EAC was involved. And I've spoken to Valerie Liggett at Bouchaine James, who's a certified arborist, and agreed that painting of the tubes would differ, you know, and be a detriment on the photosynthesis that needs to take place because that needs to be.
I'm sorry, Stephanie, do you know about the crew? The person who came out was actually going to paint them.
Yeah, that was a compromise that Mr. John had suggested and they were going to do that. The, you're right, the shades are a little different color. They are green down there. We could look at switching out the tubes, but that was something as part of the grant was to provide protective screening over the plants and everything. So that was part of it, was that Tubex cost. And, you know, it would be another $560 if we wanted to probably go back and order more for the, and see if we could get the green ones. When we ordered the green one or went to get the same ones that we used at Bridgepoint, they didn't have them in stock, so we went with the other color. So, you know, I mean, we've never had anyone raise a concern when we planted trees.
What do you think of the picture? Doesn't it look sort of odd to look out your window and just see all that?
It's part of a repairing corridor that the Environmental Advisory Council is working on. And so it was a site that we worked with Bucks County Conservation District on in selecting and on the township open space. So.
Normally, do you notify? No, I've gotten notifications before when something was going to be done with building or something or other. Should there have been like a notification? Should I have been told that they were coming out and this is what's going to happen?
Perhaps, but I believe.
I think Mr. Sinclair has a comment regarding this because I asked him about, or somebody asked him about whether there was notice.
Yes, please.
Please. I'm sorry.
Yes, hello. I'm Sinclair Salisbury, the Director of Code Enforcement. And I did actually personally visit your house and I believe it was on the Thursday before the tree planting and spoke to your wife. And we actually walked to the bottom of your property and looked at the property line and looked at the area where the trees were going to be planted. And she didn't really voice any concerns at that point, but she was notified before.
Yeah, I remember, I think my wife said somebody from the township came out and said, "You're cutting the grass too far. Don't, don't cut it."
Well, we did go.
That's the only message that I got, you know. There was no, I mean, there was no map or no discussion. There was nothing written down that said 90 trees with tubes are going to be planted. It was just, "Don't cut your grass. That's not your property." That's what we were told. And it was sort of mean, too. Like we were trying to steal property. We were just cutting grass.
Well, I don't think the message was conveyed exactly in that manner, but the reason for walking down to the bottom of the property to show your wife where the trees were going to be planted on the other side of the property line was to just show her the concrete markers which defined the property line so that there was no confusion.
I wish you would have mentioned the tubes and maybe shown us a drawing. I mean, it was, just it was really shocking to see that when it was done.
Well, going forward, I don't know, does anybody else have any comments?
Why, what was the cost to replace them with green tubes?
We would have to order new tubing. It looks like the Tubex would be probably, say, $600 at this point in time. Maybe we could order the new tubing. I mean, we're already at our grant match and everything. We'd end up going over it. Perhaps we can pull the ones off and reuse, use them in another.
The township would have to pay the $600?
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to pay the $600. We'd have to see if we can get them in that green color and then we can switch them out and.
This seems, I mean, no offense, Lanny, but it's $600 for two years of tubing, you know? At the township, taxpayers would have to pay. It's not like we have this in our shoes.
Do, let me ask this. Do we have projects in the works where if we replace the green tubes and then we had the white tubes down the line, we could use those and not have to order?
It's possible. I mean, as you know, your EAC is extremely active in this tree vitalized program and we're constantly finding spots to plant trees, especially in repairing and wetland areas. So I'm sure we'll have additional areas and hopefully can reutilize those.
I wish you would have held off when they said they were out of the green tubes. I wish you would have said, gee, we can wait a month.
Well, we were putting in the trees and, you know.
Arbor Day.
It's Arbor Day. And also we had to be able to put our grant reimbursement in and everything's on a timely basis.
Can you all acknowledge, though, that it looks very weird and strange and it's going to be two years? I don't know if I decide to sell my house, which I had been thinking about, whether people are going to be fearful of that. It's just, it just, it just looks, I mean, it looks so unusual. Looks so unusual.
I thought they looked like crooked toothpicks or something or whatever, but I agree with you, they look unusual and look odd, but at the same time, they're going to be beautiful trees in a year or so. And there's, those tubes are going to be gone. And I think your new buyers or whoever, they're just, they're not going to know that there was a vista before. They're just going to be happy that there's the trees and the beautiful backdoors. I apologize.
Well, we appreciate it. And if I understand everything, we're asking Stephanie to take a look and see if we can't get the green shaded tubes and use them somewhere else. And she'll let us know or let you know.
That would be very much, very, very much appreciated. I want you to know, if I could see green tubes back there instead of white, it would be much, much improved.
Green toothpicks.
Green toothpicks. Thank you very much. I know this was extremely personal and I'm sorry to take up your time.
Thanks for coming, Lanny.
Next are the announcements. Next meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, June 21, 2016, at 7:00 PM. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors will hold a 2017 Budget Session on Tuesday, June 14, 2016, at 4:00 PM at the Municipal Building right here. Public is welcome to attend. 2016 Discount Park and Movie Tickets are available. For purchase of tickets, please contact the Administration Office. Thompson Performing Arts Series' next concert will be held at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater on Friday, June 10. CB Kair's Y2C Rocks at 7:00 PM. Don't miss that. Also, on Father's Day, a fishing derby, June 19, 2016, Rain or Shine, at Peace Valley Park Sailor's Point. To preregister or for further information, please go to our website or contact Township Administration Office. And Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling, the third Saturday of each month, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Drop Off Site is located at the New Britain Road entrance of Central Park. Again, please visit our website for more information. Next item is Minutes' Approval, May 17.
Move for the approval.
Second. Any discussion, changes, additions, alterations? Seeing none, call the vote.
Aye.
Five, zero. No correspondence. Report, Solicitor.
The board will note in the packet that you received a memo from John Coombes, my office, who's been attending the hearings related, before the zoning hearing, were related to the rehabilitation or treatment facility in Fountainville. The status is that to date, the site engineers testified indicating that the plan, what it provides for, the relevant elements of that, together with a need for, as they call it, the minimus variance, and also a traffic engineer testified but didn't know exactly the number of trips, but based upon office and medical use came to those conclusions. I don't think the matter is again scheduled until July. There was an initiative from one of the neighbors to meet with the applicant. I think Ms. Mason is working on making our facilities available to see whether that results in any kind of outcome, but that is the status of those proceedings. And as you know, we are there to observe but not to participate in favor or against.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Can we possibly get the, some information on the people who are doing this? Who is TVC? Where are they from? What is, what is their experience in this, in this industry?
They haven't put that on us yet.
Well, I know, but we would like to have that so we can anticipate and have any questions if we may or may not have questions. As a resident, I would like to have this information ahead of time. I want to know who, you know, what, what their credentials are, what, where they have other operations like this, what their success rate, I mean, we may not know their success rate, what kind of treatment they're offering. I think we need to have this information and I suspect the residents need to have this information, but personally, I want to do my own research.
Okay, I got your instructions.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Next item, Police Chief, Chief Logan.
Just a brief comment. In the paper the other day, the Central Bucks Regional Police Department reported like 30 cars that were broken into over in the Chaufonteboro. I just want to remind our residents that it is the time of year where people are out. It's getting warm. People are out wandering around. I'm going to encourage our residents to make sure their car doors are locked and no valuables are stored within the vehicles to try and help us reduce the number of complaints that we receive.
May I add something? This time last year, there was also a series of residential break-ins and it reminded me to lock my doors.
Yes.
Because I'm very bad at that.
It's that time of year when the weather breaks and people are out, it's the time to make sure we're a little more vigilant. So if you're seeing things that are not normal to you, please call us.
Well, this was in Chaufonte. Have we seen any here in the township?
We have not had, we've had one or two here and there, but not to any of that volume. Usually when it's, when you have 30 in that close proximity, you hate to say it, but it's somebody that's in that area and they're on their sprees, but when they start getting tired of that location, they're going to start wandering.
Oh, Foxcroft is a good place to go. Yeah.
Thanks, Jill. It's a good point because I understand also at this time, kids have some free time and it to the point where they collect, they go out and see how much they can collect and then they get together at night, in the morning, and whoever got the most gets everybody else's money. So it's kind of a sad game. So it does happen. It's going to happen in the, in the neighborhood near you. Township Engineer, Mario.
Nothing this evening.
Managers, Stephanie, Sowerman Park Pond.
Yes. It was brought up, I think during our budget discussions previously, when we were talking about improvements over at Sowerman Park. And one of the things was concern about the pond. And if everyone will remember, that was looked at probably back in the 90s by Delaware Valley, now University, about leaving that little pond there to just kind of have nature take over and kind of let it grow in on its own. But I know some people had some concerns. So Dick went and met with Princeton Hydro and you have a letter from them. It does look like it's actually has some aquatic life in it. They're suggesting that they do some further study of that pond. They provided a price of $1,860 to do that. And what our suggestion is, having reviewed the letter, that perhaps the board would like to refer this to the EAC and the park board for input and consideration, but something we might want to consider as we go forward into our budgeting season. And Dick met with them, so if you have any specific questions on the letter and what they found out there, I would defer to Dick.
Any comments?
I would, I would rather discuss it here more and vote to go for it or not go for it. I think for not knowing, to me, I would like to see us know the answer versus dragging it out. And I think the more committees we're going to get involved in this, just to do the analysis and whether to go forward or not, is just consuming time. So I would suggest that we move ahead, approve the $1,860, then when we get the results, then we go back to the Park and Rec and EAC and say, "This is what we found. This, we got to do something and let them take action against it."
I agree with that.
Let me just add that I agree, but, but there's some real interest from the neighbors too, obviously. But speaking of the EAC, with the EAC and some of the folks that come out to help out, I think we're anticipating we might have some residents at our next EAC meeting that had, were interested in volunteering or whatever else, just finding out more water quality and cleanup and everything.
So we can do that in parallel. All that stuff can move in parallel.
Exactly. So I'd say just reinforce to go ahead and do it.
Is there any public comment? Anyone have any, was there a motion to spend 1,860?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the spending of $1,860 to do the assessment of the water quality.
Second down. Have a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
Just a real quick thing before Dick gives you an update on the Cross Keys Well. We received a phone call from DEP. We haven't gotten anything in writing yet, but we did receive a phone call yesterday. The 902 grant for the tub grinder, we talked about that. That was one of our capital projects. We, we do have that budgeted $208,996.20. We received the DEP, yay, DEP is posting from what we've gotten from the phone calls, so hopefully they'll send it in writing, but $188,097. Our match on that is $20,899 and change, which we're sharing with Delaware Valley. Shaking his head, thank you. So it should come out to just shy a 10-5 for each entity. So paperwork forthcoming, all good news. I know the Public Works Department and I know Delaware Valley University would be thrilled to have that new tub grinder sometime later this year.
Very good.
So just wanted to share that good news.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, Autumn, who she did a good job on working on that grant.
Thanks, Autumn, Stephanie and everybody else. When it comes to grants, I think we do very, 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 very well.
And this is a minimal contribution grant.
Yeah, it really is. Very fortunate.
Dick, do you want to talk about the Cross Keys Well, which?
Yes, I'll bring you up to date on that. Obviously, you heard we had a contamination event at our Cross Keys Well with a perfluorinated compound, generally known as PFOA and PFOS. It's pretty much a constituent found in firefighting foams as well as other over-the-counter products that we buy and use today. Where it came from, I have no idea. But as you also probably know, EPA lowered the standard or made the standard much more stringent by lowering it to 70 parts per trillion. And that meant that we could not meet those parameters for health advisory, even though it's not a compound that we normally would look for or have any reason to look for till Prior to their lowering of the limit, we were in conformance with the generally accepted health advisory of .20 parts per billion. That new lowered limit of .07 knocked us right out of the water, so to speak, and we immediately shut down the well. Fortunately, we had a redundancy at that particular area of the township in that we had a secondary source that feeds that. We immediately went to that secondary source and were able to transition into that without really anybody even knowing the difference. As of now, the authority is busy looking at perhaps installing granulated carbon filters at that wellhouse to capture the contaminants there should we decide to place that back in operations. We're also looking at a new primary source of water to feed the Cross Keys area, which will involve about three quarters of a mile of pipe run, basically from Broad Street to Old Dublin Pike, which could take over for the secondary source we now use. There's two thoughts of going on there. If we reactivate the well with the carbon filters, we could also lower the limit of the contaminant by blending a new clean source of water that goes right into the tank and mixes and helps reduce the amount of contaminant. So the authority is busy looking at these things. They're certainly not inexpensive and we will let you know further, perhaps as early as next month, that what we're planning on doing to counteract this whole thing. Right now, we also had a meeting with DEP last week, actually two meetings, and DEP has taken primacy in this whole Cross Keys Area contamination. And so we, we are, the authority is sort of stepping back, going to stick with the public water system and do what we have to do. And DEP will take over in terms of any testing done in private wells, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where it now stands.
Any comments?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. How long has that well been in operation?
Since the building in the shopping center, which probably back in the 70s, maybe? 80s? Late 80s, probably early 90s.
And while the Water Authority wasn't required to test for PFOAs and PFOSs earlier, when did we start doing that? Because, I mean, if we, I'm interpreting that we, you actually started testing it before you were required to test it.
Well, we were approached by EPA in 2013, 14.
Okay.
And they said we'd like to do this nationwide testing for this PFOA. And we picked your water system as one of the systems we would like to test. And we agreed. They did the testing. And in 2015, we got the results of those 2014 tests back. And that was the first indication we had of a contaminant in the water.
Oh, so it wasn't even our test? It was the?
No, it was not at that time.
Oh.
We were. We were curious, once this all started breaking in newspapers with the Navy Base, et cetera, I was kind of interested in seeing whether it was coming up the road, so to speak, and getting into Doylestown Township. We did a couple of tests over around the Bristol Road area and found nothing. None of our other wells and throughout the township have any kind of contaminant in it. It was just the Cross Keys that-
Well, just a question, but is that there's no contaminant, or we behold the threshold?
There's no contaminant-
Okay.
-in the other wells.
That's good.
So, I sort of lost my train of thought there.
The way the plume is moving up the road you were talking about?
Right now, we're at the stage where somebody's, if they're interested, going to have to look, and I think DEP's stepping up to the plate with that.
Okay.
They're trying to create their program right now, and they want to move quickly on this. So we'll wait and see what comes out of that.
And is there any private wells in the area that might be getting some of this as well?
There's possibility. I did actually find one hit of a minor nature, but it's still above the limit. So I gave that right to DEP, and they're going to run with that. We also notified the homeowner of what we found, and they were advised to use bottled water-
Okay.
...for drinking. So it's going to be a very problematic situation. This chemical and the compounds in it, I understand, are capable of forming, different chemicals are capable of forming PFOAs as they mix together underground, so there are other sites, I guess the ChemFab site was one of them, where they, they found the same chemical and feel that it's not from an over-the-counter type situation, that it's different chemicals getting together and creating the compound. So it does tell me that it's going to be kind of problematic in the future.
Okay.
Any other comments? Just for my own edification, now that we've turned off that well and did a separate water feed to that area, it's safe to say that no one in our township that uses our water, Doylestown Township Municipal Authority Water, is affected. We're all in good shape as far as the PFOAs and all that. So all the water that we're supplying is clean. If someone happens to have a private well somewhere, that's, who knows? Am I characterizing that correctly?
Yes, I would just say that we do meet all our permit needs, so PFOCs, we've not found any themselves.
So if I'm, if I have a well in that area as a resident, where would I get my water tested to know if I have PFOAs or something?
You're going to have to talk to some of the local companies. I don't think there's a list out there. My understanding is there's only six testing laboratories in the United States that can handle that type of test.
Do we have that list?
I don't believe we have the list. We would have to ask DEP for it.
Okay. We should-
I think DEP's going to come out with that.
I'm sure they'll provide that list.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, David.
Supervisor reports. Ms. Lyon?
Well, I just want to thank you, Mr. Sitting in for me, Chairman, to sit in for me today. I didn't know if I was going to make today's meeting, so Rick was kind enough to say he would chair, so thank you very much.
I was going to say, your shoes are too big to fill, but that's probably not complimentary.
Yes. How do you know my size?
I know my size.
Thank you.
Nothing for me today.
Ken?
Nothing today.
Sean?
Just two thank yous. One to everybody that came out last Saturday for weeding and maintenance at the EAC Native Plant Garden. Looked like it was, you know, we know it's this busy time of year, and maybe not many would show up, but we ended up with a dozen people to come out. And so we thank you to everybody that came out, both EAC members and residents, as well as a big thank you for yesterday for the golf outing. And thank you to all the participants. Thank you to all the township staff. Thank you, Barbara, for even coming out, showing up. Ken for golfing, and Muriel and so on, and Chief. And so thanks to everybody, and it makes it all a success when we have so many people involved. It was, it was a great day.
Thanks, Sean.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. No one finished business? It's new business. Delaware Valley University calf barn. If you want us, no, sorry.
Joe Gukavon from Delaware Valley University is here to talk about the calf barn. You will see a letter in the packet. They are requesting a waiver of land development, and Joe is going to give a brief presentation on the need for the calf barn.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Joe Gukavon. I'm the Executive Director of Facilities Management at Delaware Valley University. We are looking to do this calf nursery barn. This is a state-of-the-art barn. It, it sounds impressive when you say "state-of-the-art," but nevertheless, it is just a barn. It's actually, it has three sides, and I will, if I can get this to work, show you.
Joe, I think some assistance is coming.
That's good.
How long am I going to stand here?
Very briefly.
Sorry?
Probably briefly.
Safe?
While we're getting the technical assistance, the board was inclined to waive land development. We always require a land development waiver agreement because there will be a grading permit and some other things, so if you're inclined, it will be conditional on that.
Yes, so this is a picture, this is not at our facility, but this is what the barn, or similar to what the barn would look like. It's, it just has three sides. And what it's for is we have the calves that are now in these, what look like dog houses, they're calf hutches. They're on a stone pad, and there's disease that, that comes along with it. The mortality rate for these calves is, is not what the program is looking for, so they want to go to this state-of-the-art facility to, to try to correct that. The, the picture in the upper left, if you can see it, is the area that we're looking to locate it. It's a small grass area just to the right of the, the stone driveway there. And to give you an aerial view of where we're looking at, the, the building that you're looking at is, is the dairy barn, and then that, that blue shaded area is the location of the proposed calf nursery barn. This is, we are requesting a waiver of land development so that we can move forward and get this done as quickly as possible.
So moved.
I'll second.
Subject to the condition, I assume?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
No.
Call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Five-zero. Next on the agenda is the zoning hearing board. Michael and Tracy Triola.
I would recommend we leave this matter to the zoning hearing board. They have some impervious issues related to an improvement for a pool deck area. No. It's my recommendation.
Any comments?
Yes, I have a question. This is a stupid question, but are they relating the bypass and their possible inability to sell their house to the need for a deck?
I think, what I, the way I interpret it is like they're staying there, so now they want to put a deck on. Like they were trying-
Because they can't sell it.
They can't sell it, so they're going to go-
That's kind of how I read it.
Yeah, they can't, they couldn't, they tried to sell, they couldn't sell, so they decided to go forward with-
Make it the best they can do.
Yeah, the pool and everything.
Well, then, that's fine.
When I look at the, the diagram that they have in here, it looks like the deck is there, and it's the proposed pool that is the addition.
I read it as a deck, no? Did I read wrong?
It's a pool. It's a pool.
It says existing deck, existing favor, proposed pool.
Yeah, they don't have the pool, I believe, so, yeah. They have some decking. They'll probably have to do more coping and stuff with the pool.
Yeah, so I'm fine.
Any public comment? Then it's the consensus of the board to let the zoning hearing board do their thing.
But it does.
Next agenda item is the base, Bill's list from June 7th.
Move for the approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Announcements. The next meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. The Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors will hold a 2017 budget work session on Tuesday, June 14th, 2016, at 4:00 p.m. right here. Public is welcome to attend. 2016 Discount Park and Movie Tickets are available. To purchase tickets, please contact the Administration Office. Thompson Performing Arts Series next concert will be held at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater on Friday, June 10th. CB Cares Y2C Rocks at 7:00 p.m. Father's Day Fishing Derby, June 19th, 2016, Rain or Shine at Peace Valley Park Sailor's Point. To pre-register or for further information, please go to our website or contact the Township Administration Offices. Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling, the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Drop-off site is located at the New Britain Road entrance of Central Park. Please visit our website for more information. Will you adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wow. Good job. Good job, Rick.